Have you been home, have you been home yet? Did you get failed?
Yeah, I was at my basement. Oh, we got like big hail.
All right.
You did?
Okay.
It was bad. Have you driven my yours in a lifetime?
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meetings for Monday, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get started with the agenda. Are there additions or corrections?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. Move forward with item three, presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. Our first item up is the special event update for Leprechaun Days. Mr. Schultz.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you all are aware, we are at that time in the year where we have our city celebration, Leprechaun Days. It's a community-based run organization of volunteers, helped by city staff to put on a wonderful event. And tonight, we have two gentlemen with us, Steve Katz, David Chumley, from the committee that are going to give us an update on this year's event.
Step on up. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Well, I'll just start out quickly by just saying thank you to the city council and everyone, and all of the city department heads that we work with throughout the year to make this event happen. Truthfully, every department has just been super to work with. And I think we probably have the same goal in mind to just have a safe, free, fun event. And everything we've ever asked them, they've stepped up and helped us. So it's tremendous. So I just hats off to, when you see the department heads and stuff, make sure they, they hear about that if you would please.
Thank you.
Very helpful. But real quickly on my end, our eight-day event started last Saturday with the Run for the Gold and then Fireman's Sausage and Waffle Breakfast. Last night, the Lions had their kitty parade where Cubs served hot dogs, water. Mayor Jeff was there. Unfortunate, I didn't get a chance to talk to you or whatever, but they did a wonderful job and it was very well attended. And then today starts the medallion hunt, I understand. So good luck to everybody with that and the sponsors of that. And again, throughout the week, there will be all kinds of different events. You know, block party tomorrow night, I guess, starts. And I'll let, you want to interject anything, David, before I kind of get into, I'll get into one of the things, kind of a big change in our, we think is one of the biggest changes this year with the event at all, so.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to echo the thanks to everybody that's involved from the city's perspective. There really is a monumental effort of volunteer hours. And so what the city does to help us is greatly appreciated.
Yeah, and the twenty-two members that we have on our committee, we've kind of thankfully got them involved in little subcommittees. And they each just take care of their little section of area. And truthfully, we are just so thankful that we were able to find the quality of people that were are willing and able to step up and, and help with that. Because as we all know today, it's a little more difficult finding them people. But one of the biggest changes that we think is going on this year in our event is in the Beer Garden. And actually, the beer, we actually created a new subdivision, our subcommittee, just to address the Beer Garden issue. We've been approached over the last couple years from the local businesses that said, how can we get involved with and how can we never get allowed to entertain the opportunity to even be part of the event? So we created this subcommittee. They sent out a short survey and we found out there were eight licensed businesses within the city limits of Rosemount that would be able to participate. So the subcommittee sent out a quick survey to all eight of them. We got seven of them responded back to the subcommittee. They reviewed them and after reviewing them, they came up with a recommendation to the committee that we feel these three vendors should be part of the Beer Garden and just to offer a little bit more wide variety of product, as well as hopefully reduce some of the service lines of getting a beverage for the attendees that were there. So like to think that this is our first year of this, so we're hoping for the best, that it works out well. And ideally, we're, you know, for us, it's kind of dependent on the weather. And I know Mayor Jeff, I don't want to put any undue pressure on you, but the former mayor said he was always in charge of the weather. He ordered pretty good weather, so.
Well, I hear it's going to be hot. That one I may not be able to change.
We don't, it's hot is good. We just don't want wet, okay? We'll take hot and dry.
Maybe we do want a little wet.
Or windy.
All right. Well, we appreciate that.
Or straight line winds.
But for us, that's pretty much, and for me, that's, I guess, my part, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, unless you guys have questions regarding us or what's going on. We did, our, we did put a little extra money out of our budget towards the fireworks this year to get a, hopefully, a little bigger and better show. And as Dan mentioned to me last year, as he was going home, right when the fireworks started, he goes, he was heading home and he says it was like a parade. He thought he was in a parade, that there were so many people around by Erickson Park and stuff. So it's not just the people congregated in City Square that enjoyed the fireworks. It seems like it's a citywide thing that people come and put up lawn chairs and, and just enjoy the event. So we took a little extra money out of our budget to try to make it a little bit bigger and better. So hopefully, we'll find out, you know.
So just a few questions here before I open it up to council. One is change on the refreshments. Do you want to share the, the three vendors that are showing up this year?
Certainly. The Clover, Omni Brewing, and North Twenty are the three that were chosen this year.
And then you mentioned volunteers. Obviously, this year, you've, you know, you managed through this, but I'm sure you're always looking for new volunteers. If somebody's listening out there wants to be a part of this great community festival, what should they do?
Leprechaundays.org, our website. All the information's out there, leprechaundays.org. We've got a new website this year, too, so.
It seems like one of the biggest challenges for us is actually during the events, the main events themselves on Friday and Saturday night. Thursday nights, not quite as, has, in the past, hadn't been so busy. But Friday and Saturday nights, just trying to keep the garbage and the recycling containers fresh and so that they're not spilling over and making a mess. That's what seems to be one of our biggest challenges. We're out there trying to do that, whatever, but we're.
Garbage and recycling, I mean, who wants to volunteer for that?
Open up to the rest of the council. Any questions or comments?
No, just. I mean, just a sincere appreciation for what you guys do. I mean, we, you know, we interact with several of you guys, you know, throughout the year and obviously this week. And we know how much work it is. And this is kind of a full-time gig for a lot of you guys for these seven, nine days and many days leading up to it. So thanks for all of your work. It's, it's a tremendous event and it gets better and better every year. And we're lucky to have you guys doing it.
It's my favorite hometown festival. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
And I would just echo that. It's, it's tough to get volunteers and we see it, too. You guys spend all these hours doing it. And I remember last year specifically seeing Dave like running around, taking garbage bags and emptying recycling. So appreciate all the work that you guys do from an administrative level, all the way down to helping out on the day of. So it means a lot to the community.
Well, thanks. Yeah, our committee members, we appreciate a lot. They're, you know, we try to split up the duties so that nobody has to, you know, get burnt out real bad. But it's just, we feel fortunate as well. So, but thank you guys for all the work and the help from all the department heads again.
And then any reminders of times, the bands that are playing Thursday, Friday?
Yeah, so.
Tonight, the community band is actually out there. So if you're on TV watching, you can still run down and see them.
Up there playing right now at the band show. Thursday night, the events run from five PM to ten-thirty PM. And we have the local band Mojo Monks playing from seven to ten-thirty PM. And then Friday night, the event runs from five PM to eleven PM. And we have Coyote Wild, the country band, playing. And then Saturday, it starts right after the parade. So the parade's at eleven AM. And then the Midsummer Fair part opens from, it runs from one PM to eleven PM. And we have another local band, High and Mighty, playing on Saturday night from seven to ten-thirty or eleven-ish.
Great event.
Going off typically around ten o'clock or so.
Yep, yep.
Great event. I know a lot of neighboring communities find their way over here as well. So it's a great hometown event for us.
Mayor, if I could, maybe just a logistical update, guys, too. You're about to consider on your consent agenda, a road closure of one forty-fifth, just the small section, like we did last year, which was a really nice safety improvement. So just reminding residents to be aware that as you crest over the hill there on one forty-fifth, before you get to the railroad tracks, you're about to come up on a road closure temporarily. More importantly, maybe, or as important, but from a logistics standpoint, we do have the, the park and ride this year. So MVTA is partnering to provide a park and ride Friday night. And then for a good chunk of the day, Saturday. So Friday, five to ten, Saturday, four to eleven. You can park a DCTC in the western lot, probably where you park, you know, generally speaking, for the, like the egg hunt type thing. There's a good map on leprechaundays.org for that. And then every fifteen minutes, a circulator bus will bring it downtown. So you don't need to fight the, the traffic downtown. So we really hope folks will utilize the, the park and ride.
Yep, thanks for that, Logan. That's a, a big plus for this year. Thanks for your work on that with the MVTA.
All right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
That completes our special events update three A. We'll move on to public comment number four. Anyone wishing to come before council on subjects that are not part of our meeting agenda may do so. If you do, coming up to the podium, state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. The podium's open. And seeing no one at this time, we'll close item four A, public comment. We have no responses to any previous public comments. And five, and we'll move to the consent agenda. Items six A through I. Is any items wish to be pulled by council? Seeing none. The consent agenda reads with bill listings, minutes of the July eleventh regular and work session proceedings, donation acceptance from Scott Chiropractor Clinic, authorization for temporary street closings and adding of events. That was just mentioned here on one hundred and forty-fifth. Custodial bank agreement, autumn path extension project final payment, administrative services department positions, and a minor PUD amendment for the PDPW campus. So with that, anyone like to move the recommended action for approval?
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Climpel, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes five zero, completes item six, and we'll move to public hearings. Seven A, Schaefer Richardson Conduit Financing Authorization Requirement. Mr. Van Oss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a conduit financing authorization request from Schaefer Richardson. They had an approved development plan for one hundred and sixty-four units to be restricted for those making lesser equal to fifty percent and sixty percent of the area median income. These plans were approved earlier in the spring. So generally, Dakota County CDA is the allocator of entitlement bonds for these types of projects. However, they have hit their allocation for twenty-twenty-three, and the applicant needs to pursue conduit issuer outside of Dakota County. In this case, they've identified Columbus Township in Anoka County as the conduit issuer. Minnesota statute authorizes a municipality to issue obligations to finance the acquisition or improvement of a property located outside the corporate boundaries of the municipality if the obligations are issued under a joint powers agreement between the municipality issuing the obligations and the municipality in which the property is acquired or improved. So between Columbus Township and then Rosemount. The authorization from the city of Rosemount would allow the applicant to submit an application to the Office of the Minnesota Management and Budget for an allocation of tax-exempt bonds to finance these one hundred and sixty-four housing units. The city of Columbus has identified, have been identified as the conduit issuer of the project and approved a resolution providing preliminary approval to issue the bonds in the amount not to exceed twenty-nine million on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. As part of this, the issuance of the obligations by Columbus Township will not affect Rosemount's ability to issue general obligation bonds for twenty-twenty-three. That's what's being proposed in a nutshell. City staff recommends the city council hold a public hearing on the matter.
Any questions for Mr. Van Oss?
Nope.
Seeing none from council. We'll declare the floor open for the public hearing. Again, anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so by coming forward, state your name and address and your comments. And if you can, please limit to three minutes or less. The floor is open. Seeing no one making mad dash to the podium, going once, going twice. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded to close the public hearing. Do we take roll or?
All in favor.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is closed. Look forward to any follow-up comments, concerns, issues? Otherwise, would someone like to entertain the motion to approve?
I can make a, I'll make a motion to approve the attached resolutions approving a cooperative agreement, housing program, and providing host approval for the issuance of revenue obligation bonds by the city of Columbus, Minnesota for the benefit of SRPB Strategic Housing LLC.
I'll second.
Motion by Essler, second by Fresky. Roll, please.
Climpel.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Fresky. Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
That passes five zero and completes our public hearings and the Schaefer Richardson Conduit Financing. Move to eight unfinished business, which we have none. New business, number nine, an exciting opportunity for Mr. Schultz to speak.
All right, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a bid item. We recently went out to bid for pickleball, dog park, and stormwater improvements on a piece of property that is located in eastern, oops, going around a little there, eastern Rosemount. The property is located just south of the Umore Ballfields. It's the east side of Akron Avenue, near the new Amber Fields development, also south of the DCTC Technical College out, out on County Road Forty-two. And so we are getting that property deeded to us here in the next week or two. The developer, Maplewood Development, is just going through the final steps with the PCA to get that property cleared for everything. And then that will be deeded to us. I'm guessing it might even be by the end of the week, based on the conversations I've recently had with staff from PCA. So it's about a twenty-acre property. We are working on a, on a concept plan that introduces a number of pickleball courts and also a dog park. So you can see here from the concept plan, go out a little, just a little bit further, that we have a, a large pickleball complex here on the eastern section of the property. We have a large parking lot of a hundred, roughly a hundred and twenty-four stalls, which is the large, we call that kind of the pickleball lot. And then we have a smaller, what will be a future trailhead and dog, off-leash dog park parking lot. They're not going to be dedicated for one use or the other. They're gonna, they're gonna mesh together. But for, for reference right now, that's kind of how we have it split out. We've also got a regional trail that will be coming down from County Road Forty-two and will run the length of the property, eventually continuing south down to Whitetail Woods. So that's kind of a nice example of a partnership we have with Dakota County. The county will fund the construction of this trail. And we are most likely looking at doing that sometime in late twenty-twenty-four or early twenty-twenty-five. That's when we also would be proposing to build this trailhead parking lot. Our goal is to try to also get the county to pay for a portion of this parking lot at the same time. And then we also have a loop, it's called the natural trail. It's kind of a loop trail around the whole entire site. That is a future improvement. And then we also have a trail that we identify that would connect to the shelter building up at Umore Ballfields once we get that, that built. So that's the overall concept plan. Now, tonight, what staff is recommending, we do as far as the bids go. Staff is recommending that we look at the bids, we receive the bids, and we accept the price for the base bid, which I'll go over in just a minute, the bid alternate number one and bid alternate number three. And so this map will identify the different phases of the project. So you can see the yellow mustard color. Everything highlighted is part of the base bid, along with the grading of the whole entire site. We needed to balance the site, so we have to grade the whole thing. We couldn't just grade half of it. And we, you know, we needed dirt to share from each side of the property to the other. And then the red is bid alternate number one. That is the twelve pickleball courts with a shade structure. Those are fully fenced pickleball courts. They'll be, you know, very nice like the, like the tennis courts are down at Erickson Park. So then with bid alternate three is this blue section. This is some stormwater work, some stormwater piping that we have to do to get some runoff from this basin here down to another large basin. That's being funded by a separate fund that we're working with our public works department on. But that's a stormwater overflow pipe. And so that's being done as part of this project because it works well with the type of work that we're doing on site. We do have some stormwater work that we'll be doing up here in this area. So we felt it was kind of a good project to combine work together. So again, the base bid is the yellow. That's the parking lot, one hundred and twenty-four stalls, sidewalks, trail to the softball complex, all rough grading, utilities, parking lot lights. And then we have bid alternate one is the construction of the pickleball courts. Bid alternate three is the blue area highlighted here, which is the stormwater overflow pipe. What we are recommending, we hold off until the fall of potentially twenty-twenty-four, would be to do this work here on the dog park, which is the final fine grading, seating, and fence, fencing and shelter area. We think we'd like to include that along with everything else you see in green here. So the regional trail, the dog park, the nature trail, we would like to come back at a, at a later date, late twenty-twenty-four, early twenty-twenty-five with a new bid package. Part of the reason for that is that we're paying to, to build this out of our park dedication fund. Right now, we have about three point seven million dollars in there. And we've got a long list of projects coming up. We've got the Dunmore Park and Dunmore Development. We've got the Tallamore Park and the Tallamore Development. We've got McMenamy Woods. We've got the trail out by North Twenty. So we've got a lot of projects. Staff feels that it's probably in our best interest right now to tackle getting the pickleball project up and running and get that built. That would be ready by probably June first of next year, maybe even just a little bit earlier. The goal is to get them out there at the end of August, get them moving on this project, and like I say, complete it in the spring. We feel like packaging the regional trail, the green space, the dog park, and then this little small, it's about thirty stalls, tackling that all together as a separate project. That'll give us a little bit of time to recoup some funds, to collect some more park dedication funds, and then also be able to plan for taking the rest of that site down, which I, I think we definitely can. Just a side note, the, the recommendation here is to award this contract to Northern Lions Contracting. And my understanding is that Northern Lions Contracting has the, has the contract to extend Akron Avenue to the south. They also have the Bacardi Avenue contract. And so we just feel like, you know, having them in town, being able to tackle this. There is a chance next spring, we come back to you with a change order to start adding some of these pieces in, if our funding looks like it's maybe in a little bit better place. I'm not saying we're not in a good place now. We're in a great place. We just have a lot of projects in the hopper that we want to make sure we can deliver to our neighbors who are moving in. Every time I drive east or drive up on Highway Three, there's new houses going in those neighborhoods. And I know they're all very eager to get, get a park in their neighborhood. So we want to try and do that for them as quick as we can. With that, we are looking at the engineer's estimate of about one point eight. Well, it was one million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars was what we were estimating this project to come in at. The low bid was one million seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we came in a little bit under what our budget was. The funding would come from our city's Park Improvement Fund, and then we would work with the Public Works Department to get some funding for that overflow pipe. We are recommending that we don't sign these contracts for the improvements until that land is deeded to us, which we think is going to be in the next probably ten to fourteen days. And we've got a good working relationship with the developer over there, Maplewood Development. It just, it just took a little longer than what he anticipated to get the PCA to clear all of his properties. This is the last property that needs to be signed off on by the PCA. It's Outblock Q. And, and, you know, it, it was the last piece submitted, you know, naturally, because he's not building any homes on it, which was fine with us. And the, the timing will work out fine for us. But I just wanted to make that, you know, make that clear to everyone, that we'll, we'll sign these contracts once we get that deeded to us, which will be soon. The contractor's aware of that. They understand that, you know, the contracts aren't going to come to them tomorrow because we're going to act on this potentially tonight. And so with that, I think I will stand for questions. And hopefully, I can answer whatever questions I have for you. I just want to make one more quick reference to one more map. And this, this is a little bit hard to see. I, it's, it's easier to see from where I'm sitting. The colors are not, not the best in the world. But I will show you what I'm referring to as we pull this in. Let me try and use a highlighter. That doesn't really help either. That, that is the pickleball complex. And I just want to make a reference to how close that is to the ballfields, and that restroom facility will be in the future. Yeah. So, so this, the, the length from this outfield to this foul line is two hundred and twenty feet.
It's about the same to the pickle.
So it's about the same to the pickleball complex. Very quick walk for pickleball players. And once that, once that restroom facility gets built here in the next year or two, that will be open during the day and during the evenings for ballplayers and pickleball users, dog park folks. And will be a real benefit to the people using this area. So I just wanted to show that reference, because I know when we talked about it at the work session, we were wondering, why don't we have bathrooms at the pickleball complex? We just, it's that close. And we feel like people will be more than happy to walk up to the concession slash restroom building in the future and, and use that. So with that, I will, I will take questions.
Council member Essler.
I've got a couple of questions. So just out of curiosity, what was the engineer's estimate for alternate, alternate number two?
Alternate number two. My pile of paperwork here.
Yeah.
Alternate two is, alternate two is.
The engineer's estimate?
Yeah. Nope, the engineer's estimate was for, was for the three that were approving.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
The bids for number two are on page one. This is just the bids. Thirty-one, but yeah.
They were a little bit, they came in a little bit high. The bid, the engineer's estimate was probably about, I think it was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So it was right on.
So it was right on for the low bid, but there was some of the other ones that got a little higher.
Well, there was actually.
Well, there was actually some lower.
Yeah, there was one that was a little bit lower.
One, two, three, four. Four of them actually came lower than the engineer's estimate.
Yep.
So, I mean, my first question should have been, it's listed as alternate two is the dog park parking lot, but it's really the whole dog park.
It's the fencing and the parking lots. It's just the two items.
So, when is, so, okay.
So, and that's something we might actually, like I said earlier, we might actually try to change order that into the project once we get going.
This scope, this scope of alternate number two?
Yep.
Okay. And the reason I ask the question is, if it, if we're getting favorable bids, why wouldn't we go ahead and do it now and do it all at once? They're mobilized. They're there. Is part of it because there's a chance we might get.
Funding.
Funding from Dakota County. Is that part of the reason we're delaying it?
That's what we're holding off for right now.
Okay. Which would make sense because they've got, if that trailhead is right there, and there's a, the parking lot is right there, it's going to support.
Yep.
People going there and leaving from that trailhead.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Because all the groundwork and everything will already be done. So.
Yes, the grading will be done, the rough seating, everything that they do just to kind of do a ground cover will be in place.
Okay. Thank you.
These pickleball courts are going to have lights as well, right?
That would also be a second phase. We would come back in 2024.
Oh, would. So, that's not, that's not in this bid, is, lights are not?
That's probably about a $250,000 improvement.
Okay.
Another reason why we're holding off on that piece.
Other questions? One I have, let's see, was it this? What was the first, the first picture you had up? Wasn't your alternate.
The first, the location map?
Yeah, location map.
This?
Uh, no.
This?
That one. So, I just wanted to call out, you didn't have a chance to mention it, but it's going in at the same time here, the tunnel connection to Amber Fields.
Yeah, that's right here. That's being done as part of the street extension project.
So, and that'll be available at this time, too, then?
Yep.
Timing-wise. So, I just wanted to call that out as well. All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Schultz.
Oh, just one more question. On the, on the, you know, it sounds, it seems like a reason for the delay is the potential contribution from Dakota County. Has there been any conversations with them? Do they?
Yep, we've had conversations.
Have they been?
They're always receptive when we talk about regional trails in our areas. So, they're receptive to the discussion.
Okay. So, it's probably a worthwhile delay to take. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Seeing none. Would someone like to move the recommended motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council accept the bids and award the contract to the lowest bidder, Northern Lines Contracting, for the base bid, bid alternative number one, and bid alternative number three for the pickleball, dog park, and stormwater improvement project as outlined in the attached recommendation letter.
Second.
Motion by Tyson, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Waisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel.
Aye.
Motion to approve, 5-0. That completes item 9A. Next item up, item 10, city staff updates. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, members of the council. Two exciting community events coming up. We just wanted to plug. First, of course, is Leprechandays. Just wanted to throw a shout-out or a call-out. Would love to see residents out at the City Council's booth. The council will be out there Friday and Saturday tabling. Mayor Waisensel and Councilman Fresky and I were able to attend the Aldega Minnesota Cities Conference this year, and the topic was called "City Love," and it was all about what do you love about your city. And so, bringing that idea back, and we're going to table with asking folks to come and engage with the council. It was a couple of boards that got put together about what do you love about what happened in your city in the past 10 years? What would you love to see happen in our city in the next 10 years? Be a fun engagement opportunity for kind of kids of all sizes and parents all the way beyond. So, come see us at the booth. We'll be in the parade with oodles and oodles of candy and a super cool Jeep, is what it sounds like. And so, that'll be a fun, fun weekend. And then leading right into next week is Night to Unite. So, we've gotten, folks have until Wednesday to sign up their neighborhood block party for Night to Unite. If you want to do that, so make sure to pop on our website ASAP to get your application in for a Night to Unite event. And it will be out next Wednesday at Night to Unite. So, nope, next Tuesday, and then Wednesday, City Council. Sorry. So, that's it. Back to you, Mayor.
Yep. And I think we've heard, what was there, 30?
Thirty-eight, I think I heard today.
Thirty-eight currently. So, a lot of neighborhood opportunities. Love to see that engagement with our neighborhoods for our community. So, coming up, obviously, we talked about all the Leprechandays up through Saturday, and then starting in August 1. So, that Tuesday, we also have the farmer's market open from 1 to 5. National Night to Unite will run from 6 to 9 PM in the neighborhoods. Council, next council meeting will be August 2 with work session 5 to 7. And the city council moved from our normal August 1 to August 2. That's Wednesday, 7 to 8 PM. So, with that, any other business? Seeing none, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.